... Mr. Barmedi. And we'll start with the State of Legions, please. Legions give the flag from the United States of America and to the Republic of France. Stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ. Correspondence, I do have two items here. One is a place making conference training opportunity that comes up. It's a number of pages long if you'd like to look at it. Pass it around to any members interested, or if you're interested, just contact Linda. She'll email the complete package to you. The other is a letter from a resident on Hidden Valley in regards to the continued public hearing, and I'll read that note at this time that we're into that, which will be our next subject topic, the continued public hearing and good data. John, give us a refresher, and then I can read this letter, and we'll go from there.
Yeah. All right. Good evening to the board and the public again. My name is John Fuller. I'm a professional engineer that's represented this application. It's a proposed twelve lot subdivision on the property, subject property, which is bounded by Guymar Turnpike and backs up to Hidden Valley Estates. The proposed subdivision involves the construction of two cul-de-sac roads, one on the county roadway, which has been approved by the county, and we just recently received technical approval of that roadway. That will be into five lots. The roads will be constructed to town specifications and eventually dedicated over to the town. The other roadway will be an extension of the existing Cedar Lane, which is, comes off of Heather, and that will terminate into a cul-de-sac with seven additional lots. All those lots will be served by wells and septics. We are not tying into the water and sewer system of Hidden Valley, and the project will require Orange County Department of Health approval, once this board grants what we call preliminary approval of the subdivision. And all appropriate technical engineering issues that are related to such subdivisions have been worked through, through review of the town engineer's office, including, I know, one of the biggest concerns is stormwater. The project will have to follow New York State guidelines for speedies permits for stormwater controls, and so with the new construction, stormwater will be handled on-site and will not impact adjoining properties. It will be handled through stormwater ponds that have been designed on the subject parcel and built in accordance with state standards. With that introduction, I'll let, turn it back over, and then prepare to answer any questions.
Thank you. This has been a note here from Judy and Tim Faust, 26 Heather Lane. They are concerned with the relationship to the proposed development. The area behind their homes and their neighbors, which is, according to Snow, a wet and swampy area, will become wetter and is concerned of water flowing from that work site or completed site into those yards and adjoining yards that would cause damage to their property, their pools, sheds, and et cetera. They're concerned with a stormwater management plan that's being approved, and the impacts have been addressed, the concern that the community has. They're not against growth, it says, but they want it to be responsible. This goes along the lines of some of the other comments that we have had, and as John just mentioned, there's a number of things in play already that have compliance of the developer to keep that from being a concern. The runoff will be addressed, as John mentioned, there's retention ponds. There'll be during construction, measures made that there's no silting runoff during the construction phase. These are all items that kind of a little bit redundant, but we appreciate the concern, and we're faithful through that, through the secret process and the state DEC regulations, everything will work out fine for the public, both new and old. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak in regard to, if you'd please come up, sign in and give your name for the record, please?
Submitment letter to John Fuller. Over here.
I'll read this. If you would, pass it. I don't know, it's the other.
Work member.
Linda.
Can we use?
All right. My name's Frank Ketchum. I live here in the town of Mount Hope all my sixty-five years. Thanks to you for allowing me to make my comments tonight. I worked for the New York State DOT for over thirty years and recently retired. Until then, I was certified by the New York State DEC and DOT in erosion and sediment control management. In construction, for many years, and was current until I retired, I'm very much knowledgeable in this subject. I understand that this is a public hearing for a site plan application for the Good Dada subdivision off Guymar Turnpike in Hidden Valley Estates. I have lived on the adjoining Homestead Lane on our two-hundred-acre dairy farm for my entire life, and my family has been here since well before nineteen hundred. I have followed the Good Dada subdivision through its process and feel very concerned for our community due to the wet land disturbances that this will cause and the design engineer that designed this and is proposing it. Most of this subdivision is in or near wetlands, as you can tell by the long distances between the houses and their septic systems, to avoid the wetlands. The terminal outlet for any disturbance and pollution, as well as already treated wastewater from Hidden Valley Estates, is the Middletown Watershed. I understand this project must go to the county health department for further review. From my experience in construction, most likely extensive changes. I'm respectfully requesting that the public get a second chance. I look up and lose my face. For a public hearing after the Orange County Health Department and any other entities that have had their input. To the public's, to have the only, the public's only chance to comment be before the project is even in final draft is wrong in so many ways. Please give the people a second chance to discuss what will affect our lives forever. I have many concerns about Good Dada's design engineer, John Fuller. He is currently involved as the design engineer for Quarry Management Project in its adjoining town of Deer Park. The project has been going on for more than five years. Mr. Fuller's project, as is this one, was and is submitted with all the stormwater erosion controls that are boilerplates in any plan. It is all backed by his stamped professional engineering PE license. Quarry Management has been in violation for nearly five years. They have been stopped and fined by the New York State DEC multiple times due to violations of their own stormwater protection plan and many other New York State environmental control laws, all under the supervision of the same design engineer. Currently, Mr. Fuller and Quarry Management are in the middle of requesting a major site plan revision in the town of Deer Park due to the lack of management and erosion control. Let's see, I didn't attach anything, I'm sorry. The town of Mount Hope is in MS4 Stormwater District. From what I have researched and understood, that if we allow violations of a SWIP and/or erosion controls and the New York State DEC comes in, the town of Mount Hope will be fined as well as the contractor. I'm sure we do not want that. For these reasons, I request a second public hearing after the proposed Good Dada subdivision gets any final review from the Orange County Health Department and any other entities and any other changes made to the plan. Respectfully, Frank Ketchum. Count them out.
Thank you. Well, just first off, Frank, we're not here to discuss the merits of John Fuller. That, that's one thing. You kind of got off subject there with that. I'll let it go there, but thank you for your comments, and we do appreciate it. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for the board?
A little pen, but I'll pull out my own. I got a question, basically. Mr. Fuller, how many retention ponds and everything have you done in your lifetime?
Mr. Chairman, I've got thirty-five years' experience in doing engineering. I have done probably over a hundred site plan sites that have stormwater infrastructure in place. The discussion that Mr. Ketchum referred to has no applicability to this project. It's completely off-base.
I think I'm asking a question. Well, wait a minute, I have the mic.
So, I'm responding to the question.
I asked a question, that's all I asked. He's already.
As I just stated before, this is off-subject.
I'm not, it's a subject, I asked.
He's done in the past, where he's been.
Well, because my neck, it's going to lead to my next question.
We certainly don't have any.
It's going to lead to my next question, then.
Go ahead, what's your next question?
My next question is, if these retention ponds don't work, who's going to be held responsible? Is it the town, engineering, the developer, or the residents that they're building it on for?
They've been engineered, they're going to be reviewed by the county, and their engineering and planning department, they'll be.
So, nothing falls here, I guess, nothing falls here? Nothing falls at your feet, that's what you're telling me?
I'm trying to tell you that with the design process that's in place, we don't have any beliefs there will be any failures of the retention.
But if there is?
They would have to be maintained and corrected.
And how about the homeowners that it's affected?
I'm not sure that they would affect any homeowners.
Where, the point of the matter is, if it did affect the homeowners, where do they go?
Good question, I couldn't answer to Alex. This is a potentially what-if.
Yeah, it's a what-if, but that's, you know, that's what we're living in.
There's too much what-ifs, it's too speculative. I can't give you advice on something that's so speculative.
So, if my house gets flooded, my insurance will go up, right?
Well, I don't know about that.
Well, it would go up, that's, that's what it did.
You would probably want to talk to a lawyer and get your options at that point, depending on what has happened and whose fault it, they think it is.
I'm just asking for the residents here that you're guaranteeing to go forward with this project, that we're not going to be in, you know, with water and everything else. That's what the residents want to know.
Nobody can get a hundred percent guarantee on anything.
Ninety-five?
No.
Nothing?
Well, a guarantee that all reasonable diligence of the, like, as the chairman said, of the people that are going to review this, there'll be no adverse impacts.
So, again, we don't, who will go back to the engineering part of this if there's a problem? They'll be the ones to fix this if there's a problem?
I can't answer that question at this time. I don't know. Frank, you find it humorous? Do you know who would fix it?
What's that?
You find it humorous? Do you have an answer who would fix it?
No, I haven't, I, I find it humorous that you don't know.
I just don't. What more truth can I tell you? Do you want me to lie about it?
Okay.
When's it flooded? During construction, when the homes were built, twenty years down the road, when's it flooded? What's that question? What's the answer to that?
It could be ten years down the road.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, that's the answer to that question, though. If it's ten years down the road.
It could be ten years down the road.
It could be.
It could be. The town could be responsible, the developer could be responsible? I could give you multiple answers, too. There's no right answer, that's, that's the problem.
Well, no, I'm sorry, you have a lawyer here, he probably can give you that answer once you want to be.
I just answered it, it's too speculative to know.
But who would be responsible?
And I'm telling you, I can't answer that question because it's too speculative to try to figure out who is responsible. It depends on what happens, how, how long it happens for, how far away it is, and all this, all the different facts. Nobody can answer that question.
This is why we follow the guidelines from the DEC, from the state, there's a number of them that are in place. Mr. Fuller mentioned that already, that are there to make the design in such a fashion that it minimizes any problems that may arise from stormwater runoffs, and it's, it works in progress quite regularly with the state as they change and update the codes that are necessary for us to abide by, so.
I'll tell you, if it fails, if the system fails, the town of Mount Hope will be liable for it. If the contractor fails, the town will be liable for it. We're in MS4 Stormwater District.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to have a comment? John, do you want to?
Well, with regards to, it's actually in the engineer's comment, that prior to final approval, we establish a drainage district, at which point, conditions such as maintenance, which will be in the SWIP, can be assessed as to whether that is going to be on the, the ponds will actually be on an individual property owner's property. So, the question is, once we establish the drainage district with the town, the determination will be made as to who has the maintenance on that, whether that lies with the underlying property owner, town's highway department, regardless, but all that is, that will be a condition of final approval.
Correct. Alex, anything, go ahead.
No.
Nope.
Board members, any questions?
No.
Intain a motion to close public hearing?
Well, the only thing I would say is, the request was to, I guess, have another public hearing after the county acts, or it gives us the opinion. I don't know what your procedure is, I haven't been here that long. I see nothing wrong with that.
Yes, usually what happens is, the final public hearing is something that, as the project continues to progress, it comes back from the health department. If there's major changes to the design and the project's overall situation, then it would require us to have another public.
All right, so you're, you're closing it, but that doesn't ban you from reading it down the road?
No, it doesn't preempt us from having another one later in the future, it would just, you know, behoove us to have more information and have another meeting, so.
Okay.
Motion to.
I don't disagree with that, but, you know, if the project hasn't inherently changed when it comes back from the health department, you have not obligated a public hearing of that.
Correct. Continue motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion. Mary Beth, the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's carried, public hearing is closed. Your separate declarations are moving forward. Also, we entertain a motion. The town of Mount Hope Planning Board declares itself lead agent for a purpose of secret and declares this to be an unlisted action. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
Mary Beth, thank you. The second. Jeff. Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
A second would be a resolved, town of Mount Hope Planning Board makes a negative declaration as to fund of Part 617 of New York State Environmental Law on the secret process and declares the proposed project not to have a significant effect on the environment.
I'll make it.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Brian. Go to paper.
Aye.
Furthermore, town of Mount Hope Planning Board would like to give preliminary approval to the subject for its further work with the county health department and to return here after their decisions for possibly another public hearing, that's in the form of a motion.
I'll make it.
Mary Beth, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Brian, thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried also.
All right, very good.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Frank, come next week. It's on the agenda. It wasn't necessary time. Really wasn't. It wasn't necessary. Discuss the merits of Quarry Management next.
Okay, Montgat River. You want to start keeping stuff ready, it's done, fix yourself. We'll move on to your, we got problems.
Could you please sign your name and who you are, please?
Yeah, we're done, we're done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Like to open a public hearing for the Montgat River Solar Project. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? After the introduction is done, then you would approach the podium, list your name, please, and give it for the record and ask, provide us your concerns. So, yes.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Pete Dolgus. I'm with Bull Rock Corporation, so different name than Montgat. I was at the last meeting last month.
Can you use the mic, hard to hear?
My name's, my name's Pete Dolgus.
I don't think it's turned on.
My name is Pete Dolgus. I'm with Bull Rock Corporation. I was here at the last meeting when Montgat presented, and since the last meeting, Bull Rock Corporation's been working with Montgat River, and the project is transferring over to Bull Rock to develop and construct. Notice was sent to the town a week or so ago, so that should be on file. So, David, who's been, I think, at most of the meetings, is here as we transition things over, as well as, you know, our G W G C.
Can you speak into my, I, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
And we are going to move this project forward. This, the project is a proposed solar project over on the intersection of Pine Grove Road and Van Buren, Bill Road. He's going to come up and just maybe give a quick intro to the site plan, probably can do it a little better than me, and we'd be happy to take some questions.
My name's Nicholas. I'm a professional engineer working on the project for PW Grocer, as a design engineer. Pizza, it's located on Pine Grove Road and Van Buren at the corner. We're providing screening for the solar field from Pine Grove Road as requested by the town. The set were, were adjacent to another site, as you have known, with that Van Burenville. The road was moved further away from the intersection, also requested by the town, just to avoid any conflicts at the intersection, with fire access provided. So, generally, it's going to be secured with an eight-foot-high deer fence to prevent any body from getting into the site, that's not allowed. Stormwater for the site is managed following DEC requirements for the solar field. We're following the existing drainage pattern, so we're not trying to impound any water on the site, but we are decreasing the runoff across our site by planting with that, with native grasses for the area. And that's generally a quick overview of it. That's fine, I, yeah, I think we've been in from board before.
But from Buck wished to comment on this project? Please come up and state your name, and also listen on the side sheet, please.
The pen is gone. Never was.
Here, you can use my pen and leave it up there. You're welcome.
My name is Alan Brinkerhoff. I live at 302 Groome Room. I have not been here before to listen to any of the other comments that have been made about the solar system. I do want to make these comments, though. I, I had watched Mr. Stellingworth farm that land for twenty years, and I know he farmed it for many years before I watched him, and I'm sure that the man is to the point where he cannot continue to farm that land any longer. It's becoming difficult for him. So, we have options. We can sell the farm to another farmer, but I don't think there's any farmers today that are willing to work as hard as Mr. Stellingworth has all these years. So, that probably isn't going to happen. Another option is, we sell that farm to a developer, who then comes in and subdivides the property and jams as many homes as he possibly can onto that property. They are all going to require septic systems and wells. The septic systems are going to leach into the little shawanga kill that runs through the, through the property and pollute that. Those homes are going to all have two or three cars in each driveway, which is going to clutter up our roads even more than they already are, and they're probably going to have two or three children that are now going to have to go to school, so we'll need to build some new schools and hire some more teachers. So, that's another option. The third option is that he could possibly find someone to buy the property, like happened with a parcel on Spruce Road about eight years ago. That was a piece of farmland that was purchased by a owner of a trucking company, and the owner of the trucking company petitioned the town here to build a large steel building that I think maybe was indicated it was going to be used for livestock, because the land is zoned residential, agricultural only, but the town allowed him to build that building, even though there was a lot of opposition by the neighbors, and today there's a very large trucking company operating out of that building that runs trucks out of there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I don't know how the neighbors that live close by can even put up with the noise and the pollution that takes place because of that business being there. I don't think that should have ever been allowed, but this town did allow that business to be there. So, we have multiple options, and what we can do with this piece of property, something has to be done with it, because Mr. Stellingworth can't continue. A solar field, no pollution, no additional traffic, no noise. In my opinion, it's a win-win for the town and the residents. I think Mr. Stellingworth is doing an admirable job to try to keep our community somewhat as it is, because anyone that might be opposed to this solar field needs to take a look at the other options that I just mentioned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Kurtz. My wife and my two daughters, we just moved here four months ago on Pine Grove Road on the new homes that were built. As, I'm trying to get settled in here, you know, trying to understand what goes on in this town, we chose it for a reason. I do have some concerns. I get it, technology, everything moves on, make things better. I just want to make sure that this is something that is going to benefit this community. Solar, in that area, I feel, I don't care how much you put fencing up, is going to destroy the aesthetics of what I just moved into, okay? So, I don't understand why they can't move it further back on that land, where it's not so close to the road. I mean, building berms, putting up fencing, that to me is not natural landscape. Now, you're just trying to hide something. What's that going to do to the value of my home that I just spent a lot of money on to have built? have built? Now, again, I'm for solar and renewable energy. I drive a Tesla, okay? I definitely believe in that type of stuff. But at what point are we going to say, okay, what are we doing to the demographics of this town? Okay? And every other town? You know, there's a lot of land there. I've seen some of these other solar farms that are done around here that are way off to the side, you can't even see they're there. This one is right off of Van Burenville on Pine Grove Road. To me, that's...it's just, I don't care what you do, it's kind of like, excuse the expression here, putting lipstick on a pig, right? You know, we're trying to make something that nobody really wants to see, right? Pretty. I don't know, I just feel like my wife and I, we're not too thrilled about the location. We don't care about, you know, the renewable stuff. We definitely agree with it, no problem, but I just think whoever chose that spot, they didn't think. So when I saw the survey markers, I said to my wife, oh, maybe they're going to build another couple of houses here. And then I was told by some of the subcontractors doing some work at my house, no, it's going to be a solar farm. And they weren't too happy about it because they've been living here for 20, 30, 40 years. Not that they're not happy about solar, it's just that location, because every one of them have said to me, that just is not the right location for this. So that's a concern that I have, is, you know, the aesthetics, the demographic, what's it going to do to the value of my home and everybody else's home that's over there? If this Mr. Stellingworth is a guy who can't farm it anymore, I get it. You know, I mean, farming is a very hard job, and today, a lot of people don't want to work that hard anymore, you know? So, yeah, if he's going to do that to help himself and the community, I get it. I just feel like this is something that should really be looked at and maybe pushed a little further back on the back of that property somewhere, so it's not so much of an eyesore. You know, like I said, I've moved here with my wife and my kids for a reason. I retired out of the Army after doing 41 years, living on Long Island. I got tired of that scene. I came up here for the country, for the, you know, the mountains, the scenery, the this, the animals, the this, the that, the other thing. So, you know, with a project like this, we just want to know what's it really going to do to impact what we came up here, as well as all the other homeowners who just built up here. They're all coming from the city. They're all coming from local parts. My neighbor, he lived on the other end of Pine Grove before it became Howell's Turnpike. So, you know, they've been born and raised here, and they have concerns about it. So, you know, that, as well as, you know, what is it going to do to the environment? You know? I understand that after a while, solar panels will start to crack and erode. What's that going to do when snow and water melts on it or water runs off it? Is it going to put any kind of contamination onto the ground? Okay? Solar panels have come a long way, but nothing is, you know, impenetrable, so to speak. After a while, something will fail, and, you know, what's it going to do? What kind of radiation will it emit? Okay? That's another thing. I know for a fact, friends who had solar panels put in their house years ago, yeah, you know, there's a lot of radiation that comes off of that. The newer ones today, you know, a little bit different, especially the Tesla solar panels. They're...that guy cracked the code on a lot of things. But these are just concerns that, you know, my family have, as well as some of the neighbors. I just think that maybe before they start really doing something, can we just look at that site again and see if there's any way to just push it back so that we have the natural landscape and kind of conceal it rather than making something to conceal it? Other than that, I mean, that's really all I have. One other question is, did this meeting start at seven?
Yes.
Because on the announcement I sent, it said 7:30. So I kind of got here a little early, and I heard you guys talking, and I was like, I hope it didn't start yet. So maybe somebody can look at that to make sure that the announcements aren't actually what they should be? Okay? Otherwise...
There was somebody before you anyway.
Was there? Okay. Well, otherwise, look, I mean, I think it's a beautiful town, you know? I think there's a lot of good stuff here. You know, my daughter's going to be going to the elementary school, as well as the other schools here. You know, we like the churches, we like everything here. It's just, we heard that, that was kind of like, really took the wind out of our sails, especially that we just moved here. You know, had I known, and it probably wasn't available when we looked at this place a year and a half ago, that they were going to do that, I definitely would have chose that. So, again, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying to be insensitive to anybody, it's just, can we just please take a look at where that one is going, because all the other ones seem to be, you don't even know they're around. But anyway, that's it. Thank you for your time. Have a great day. Thank you.
To answer some of that for you, we do have zoning regulations concerning solar projects such as this. That is one of the processes that is in the works right now, there before the zoning board. I think that's still an active application there for variances to some of the setbacks. So it is being reviewed. We don't have an answer yet because the processes haven't followed through yet. But thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment? Please come up.
Hi, I'm Grace Flutter. Live on Garmard Turnpike, Garmard Lake. I think particularly with this project, it goes to the core of land use and also the future of, you brought up zoning. What you have going on, and in a very slow way, is the suburbanization of rural areas. And the town has, there's a lot of pressure, and farmland is no longer being farmed. There are alternatives of putting the land in easement or approaching land trusts so that they remain wild. Or farmland and go fallow or go and grow back into tree areas. The question I have for this project, which I don't know a lot about, is, is it planted...is the field clear already?
I'm sure, yep.
Is the land cleared?
It's just, it's like a grassy old land.
Yes, it's mostly clear.
Okay. Had it been farmed before?
Oh, there's a farm there. He's been farming for...
Right.
Yeah, historically.
New York State is very interested in solar, obviously, but it really discourages, and I know we have around here, the clearcutting. I know we had a big project on Whitehead Road in Deer Park for clearcutting for solar panels, which really discourages and it encourages the...encourages solar in existing or waste areas, abandoned malls, or areas that are not suitable for anything else rather than deforesting areas or, yes, or taking farm land out of use. There's a big project with the Orange County Land Trust on this. I have a question. Is the...are you planning on having a battery? Batteries?
No, ma'am, there's no battery storage.
There'll be no battery storage? Okay, great. And so I think zoning nationally is just catching up to a lot of the impact of zoning and because little by little, as you...I'm for re-ruralizing, and I think that's possible in many ways, but it's very easy to become a bedroom community developments, and then you have lights, and then you have a mini mall, then you have a larger mall, and then the sense of rural area with darkness at night and a sense that you're still in the country that disappears. That's all I have to say. Thanks. Did you write your name down? Oh, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on the solar project? Okay, hearing done, I'll turn it back over to the solar peoples.
So I guess I just want to ask what the next steps are. The last meeting, you had mentioned leaving it open, public hearing open until October. I don't know if that's still the case here.
Alex, what do we do? We were anticipating you coming back with a decision from the Z B A, but that's not happening yet.
Well, we can't.
No, they're headed for a public hearing, too.
Okay. So is this a continuation? Do we close it with the understanding and reopen it?
I would just leave it open.
Leave it open.
With the consent of the applicant.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, don't we have to have seeker completed to go to the Z B A so we can proceed to the Z B A process?
Well, yes, yes, that's another point.
Right, so I guess my question would be, when, if you leave the public hearing open, you eventually have to close it in order to hold your seeker.
Right. We can talk about how, you know, what's going to be the process for finalizing the seeker, because the zoning board needs that.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I think we need to know, too, what they're doing, as if the plan changes from, the zoning board says, we're not moving, build it to what the zoning says, or if the zoning board says, we're going to grant all of your requests, we don't know at this point, so.
And that's one reason why we suggested having a public hearing in front of the zoning board, so that they could dance a little bit.
Okay. Was that at the last meeting?
No.
That wasn't at the last meeting, you mentioned the public hearing.
You didn't even come to the last meeting.
No, I was at the last meeting, sitting in the audience.
The zoning board did not schedule a public hearing for you.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that. I thought that's what Alex had just said.
Yeah, no, no, they had to schedule it.
Yeah, and they, I think it was pretty clear from the requests early on that they wanted to have a joint public hearing, and we said, no, it should be one for each entity to address the items of those concerns of those boards.
My understanding was that the public hearing here needs to be closed and seeker completed in order to go to the Z B A. They can deny, they can approve, and then we would wind up having to come back here.
Right. Yeah, that's the process is that if it doesn't meet zoning, it has to go to the Z B A for it.
Correct. And that's where we're going, and I just want to get to the next step so that we can go to the zoning board.
We've never had a run through to the zoning board before, just on the fact that it doesn't meet zoning. We've never done seeker. We've possibly declared lead agency or intent for lead agency, but we've never had to go through the complete seeker process to get the applicant to the Z B A.
Okay, since I haven't been to all the meetings, I was at the last one, is that what we've been going through?
Yeah, so we weren't at the last Z B A meeting. I was at the one before that, and like you guys said at the planning board meeting before, we did request a public hearing to be scheduled with the zoning board. They weren't comfortable doing that at that time. They wanted, they had more questions. Fast forward to now, we just submitted again to the Z B A.
So you want to come to the next Z B A meeting?
On Monday? Yes, yeah, just to...
On what you submitted?
Yes.
Yes, what you submitted, addressing, if you don't mind me speaking.
Go ahead.
On what you submitted, addressing the questions, which had to do with a lot of if...questions that the board members asked.
Yes.
That's your submission to come to the meeting this coming month.
That's correct, yes.
So I'm going to put you down on the agenda. Are you going to come?
Yes, will be.
Yes, I will be there. That was submitted.
Okay.
And our understanding, my understanding, was that October first zoning board meeting was just...
Is it first Thursday, Wednesday of the...
I think it was October first. And that meeting was intended to keep the process moving with the zoning board. They won't make a decision at that meeting. They'll continue clearing questions, asking questions, but they won't make a decision because they're waiting for the planning board to get...
Not necessarily.
That, I'm just giving you what I heard last meeting. Like, I don't know if I'm off there.
Well, you've never had a public hearing with the zoning board.
That's correct, because they hadn't scheduled one because they were waiting for the planning board.
No, I'm going around and... They're waiting for answers to some of their questions. That's my memory of it.
That was the main holdup. They, the memo that we just submitted, they wanted that.
Before the public hearing, right.
Before the public hearing.
But they can't, but they weren't going to hold a vote or approval until we finish with the planning board seeker, right? Or am I...
Yeah, that's correct.
But that's different than a public hearing.
I've never heard of such thing. Is that bad for our performance?
We talked about having a public hearing for the Z B A. Yes.
I don't recall that from the last meeting, so I'd have to go through the history of what was here. I remember that, yes.
Yes, we talked about it, but they wanted answers to their questions.
But they didn't have their answer, they didn't have their questions answered.
Correct. And so no public hearing was scheduled.
No public hearing.
Okay, so the steps would be for us to attend the zoning board hearing.
And you're hoping... And ask for a public hearing.
Request a public hearing.
That what you submitted will answer their questions.
Yeah.
You're hoping, yeah.
Yeah, we're hoping, and we hope to get a public hearing scheduled, yes. And then once that's scheduled and closed with the zoning board, we would come back here.
That would be, that would be the plan, yeah.
Yeah, with some sort of determination from the Z B A.
Determination from the Z B A, then you will do seeker, and then we go back to the zoning board. I'm just not following the sequence.
Once they make the decision, that would...
Well, they're going to need a seeker decision from the planning board before they can make a final decision, but there can be an indication of where they're at after the public hearing.
It's going to change your design, right?
It could.
I understood. Completely understand. I was only at one meeting, so I'm not sure, like, if I'm off with the process here for what we're doing, but I get what you're saying right now.
Yeah, from my understanding, I believe that tracks, meaning that there would be a public hearing before the Z B A regarding the inquiries for the variances required.
You can't possibly have a public hearing with the Z B A until November.
Correct, they'd have to schedule it in October, maybe October first.
If what you submitted, they're satisfied with it.
At which point, that meeting would be held, but the variance is not granted, the meeting, the hearing would then be closed. We would then come before the planning board again, following the close of that hearing. The planning board would conduct its review and classification under seeker, at which point we would then return to the Z B A for the variance approval?
Or another public hearing.
Or, depending on how that comes out.
Exactly.
We only meet once a month, each board.
Okay.
Good? All right, thank you.
So is this considered a contingency?
Oh, yeah. Is this going to be continued, then, Alex?
Public is up to you guys.
Well, to close it, they have to agree to the fact that it's being closed and there may be a delay beyond the...
Correct.
Once the clock starts.
So you can leave it open pending what the Z B A does, if you want.
Well, I think we'll do that.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll continue this public hearing to a future date at such time as we have the information from the Z B A and more complete and firmed up site plans. We don't have a prediction of that time, but you do agree to the fact that once that is, process is followed, we'll get it back on and...
Yes, zoning board, October first. We will request a hearing for November first.
Yeah, it would be subsequent to that, that we would be able to then...
And then it would be some information there. It would be later in November for a public, hold this meeting, and the Z B A would not have voted, presuming we have the public hearing. You just want to hear which way they're going to lean in order to come back here.
Right, the plans may have to be readdressed to reflect what their decisions are going to be.
Do they need a motion on this, Alex?
I'm sorry?
Do they need a motion?
Yes, and I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing to a future date, not decided at this time. Jeff, with the motion, second please. Mary Beth with the second, those in favor? Aye, and that's carried, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else second? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you made appropriate notice to both boards of the name change? Does that membership change as well, or just a name change?
No, it's a, it's in, the name change of the project, the Oya Pine Grove Road, it remains the same. So everything's in that name. The ownership of that LOC changed from Angop to Paul.
I would suggest you just send a letter explaining that to both boards.
Okay, a letter went in, I think, in email, but I'll send it over.
But now, does the EAF have to be changed? And the actual front page of our application should be changed, Alex?
As long as I put in a letter explaining exactly how it is, I don't think you have to change the application.
We will double check, but I think everything's in the name of the project company. It's the owner sitting above the project.
The owner is still Oya.
That's, that's, yes, that's the project company that owns the project.
Okay, so where do we send our billing? Is the billing address still the same?
I will send you a message. I think, I think we already responded to an email with that, but I'll send that over to you also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, report from engineer and attorney, anything from office? Jason, well?
Yes. You're good, huh?
You're in fire again?
No.
Okay, good. Okay. Moving on, public participation. So anyone here from the public that already didn't speak or didn't want to speak again, now's the chance.
Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, on a totally different subject. I'm not sure who owns that, this area, which is Van Burenville and I think 17, or the Stewarts over there, and Dogwood Acres, that intersection? Only because everybody goes around it when they're coming up Van Burenville from, yep, from Dogwood Side, because it's such a big dip there that everybody's called bottoms out. I saw over the summer, construction guys doing the shoulders, and I had asked them, and they didn't speak in English.
That's in the town of Waukele.
That's my question. So who do I go to to talk about that? Because it's pretty bad.
That is town of Waukele.
Okay, so where would I go? Where's the town of Waukele?
Yeah, Tower Drive is the main channel.
Tower Drive? So that's over by...
The highway grounds are right down the street.
By Spectrum, okay, which is over...
You go to that red light, and then you just go straight through that red light.
Okay, all right. Only because I wasn't sure if this was, if that was...
I know exactly where you mean.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's pretty...
It's pretty bad.
Quite a dip.
Yeah, yeah.
That there road.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I, that's all I needed to know.
Oh, and you're going to, when the ZBA has their public hearing?
Yes.
You'll be getting another notice.
Okay, just make sure we check the time. Because my wife sent it to me last night, two of them. Yeah, she said, she wasn't sure which one was tonight, because I guess somehow she just found out, but she texted me this. Town of Mount Hope, Town of Mount Hope Planning Board, the address here, blah, blah, blah. Notice a public hearing about the solar farm. And it says, September 17th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. And then the other one...
The first one was 7 o'clock.
Yeah, so was that this one?
No.
Okay.
There was one before you.
Was it, here's another one, another announcement.
Good data.
September 15th at 7 PM. I don't know which one that was. That was a board meeting in general.
That's town board.
That's town, so it's not for you guys.
No.
Okay.
Separate meeting.
Okay, so then, yeah, I guess this one, for whatever reason, is the typo at the time, that's all. But, no, that's all, thanks, guys.
Back to your question on that of Waukele work. They did work to shoulder and terminal work on a number of intersections. From that point, it went down to 302 and 17, and then back down to mud mills. There's a large warehouse facility, that part of that.
Yeah.
Warehouse development was beefing up and widening all the shoulders where truck traffic would be.
Yes.
So that's what you saw and were experiencing when they did it. But it's been a long time that pressure is...
It's pretty bad, yeah. I mean, especially when you see other cars going around and people, and again, I'm new here, only here like four and a half months, and I'm seeing people with road rage hitting the horn, like, why are you coming into my lane? You're repeating mine, and then they start to realize.
I've seen people too, that go so far, you think they're going to turn and go down the wrong side of the other road.
Exactly, you're coming back up.
But it could be, that's a state road, the main road, 17, so it might be a, you know, bouncing clean pound ball between town and state because, not my job, it's yours, it's not theirs, it's...
Well, it's actually both, if you think about it, because it's an intersection. So whoever owns Van Burenville, if that's Waukele, you know, and then, you said the state for 17. But when you take 17 down to turn on 302, that wide shoulder, they told me they did that because that was erosion.
Oh, really?
It was eroding really bad, so that...
It was, but it was never repaired or maintained or addressed, and then it was addressed.
Someone was just driving on a cement truck.
Gravel or something. The iron ore.
And to a line going into Port George. Warehouses, because the truck traffic will be coming that way, or Tower Drive, they've done a lot of work over that way too. Assuming they're waiting around.
From middle to...
All right, well, I'll talk to them soon, they say, you know, maybe, you know, I will say this. On Van Burenville, definitely in Mount Hope, because you see the sign, welcome to Mount Hope, on, I don't know what direction you go, but you're going towards Pine Grove Road on Van Burenville. Sorry, I'm going southeast west. But anyway, there were two major potholes right inside of the road. And again, I was going to talk to somebody, and I saw somebody was on it right away. And I said to my wife, I said, you know, I noticed over the summer, some of the town trucks out there, they must be assessing, because literally, a few of those other areas, they filled them. You know, so then I'm like, all right, well, maybe they missed this one? That, you know, that, because that's going to be a big jump.
They repaved Van Burenville three years ago, and I think that did worse by repaving.
Maybe not.
Okay, all right.
My experience is...
Thanks again, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? I've forgotten, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Of course, thank you, Mary Beth. All of us, unanimous, we know.
Who seconded that?
Thank you, everybody.